That we have abruptly ended this hearing due to technical difficulties. The committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 1:00 P.M. on Monday, March 29th in this room and on YouTube. However, I think we're running into deadlines, so I don't think this is possible. But a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website of this hearing is to be delayed. And for those testifying, the audio is muted and video is disabled until shortly before it's your turn as well, and you will be allowed two minutes as well. And also, if they are during decision-making this afternoon, all bills where the Senate draft one will contain technical and non-substantive amendments. Let's proceed then with HB 19, House Draft One. And this relates to the issuance of special purpose revenue bonds to assist Kana Leva. And this replaces the original name, Eola Maaleo O Kekaha, with Kana Leva. As the entity authorized to receive this special purpose revenue bonds issued to assist with the acquisition, remediation, and development of the old Kekaha Sugar Mill in Kekaha, Hawaii. Testifying for this bill is a support communications. And I believe we have, who'll be speaking for this? May Rose, are you speaking for the group? Now, just to confirm, in your testimony, there were many other communications, testimonies. I understand you're speaking on behalf of all of them?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, proceed and welcome.
Aloha, Chair. I am May Rose Mina, President of Kana Leva. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of Kana Leva and the people of Kekaha in support of HB 119, HD1. I stand on my written testimony. This bill will accelerate the cleanup of the Kekaha Sugar Mill and the revitalization of our community. Today, the mill sits abandoned and full of toxins. Twenty yards away is the Kanaka School, a place where our Hawaiian children are learning. Surrounding the mill are homes, including my family's home. Now, the mill presents an opportunity for revitalization through agriculture, tourism, knowledge infrastructure, and local fisheries. Importantly, the mill represents the future town core that has been written in the Kauai West Side general plan. We ask that you support this bill under Kana Leva, the nonprofit organization reforms unite the Kekaha community. We humbly ask for your support of HB 119, HD1. Mahalo for your time and available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, May Rose. I have just one question. So has the brownfield issue been resolved? And have you gotten the grants from those applications that you folks had applied for?
Not yet. So we applied in October. We hope to hear from the EPA by July, late August. And as soon as we hear from them, and hopefully we've won, we'll begin the environmental assessment.
Okay, but it'll take a while, yeah? So, but, but the process for the spur bill, because this process as well will take a while. So even without that particular grant, your application is being submitted via this legislation, yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, and also thanks the community and yourselves for trying to accommodate a community and using old sugar mills, which most of us have in our territories within the state. Any questions? Okay, any questions, members? Hearing none. Then we'll proceed with the second item. On the agenda is HB 863, House Draft Two, and this is relating to forestry. And this authorizes the geo-bonds for the forest stewardship program for the Department of Land and Natural Resources to build and expand facilities of the state tree nurseries. And members, just to let you know that we have heard this measure as well in previous meetings here in Waterland Committee. DLNR, who's online today?
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair.
David.
David Smith, I'm the Administrator with the Division of Forests and Wildlife. And we submit a written testimony in support. We'll stand on that unless you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, David. Walter Bowen, UH of, is that SITAR, yeah?
Yes, that's correct, SITAR.
Aloha.
Aloha. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Associate Dean of Research for SITAR, and we would like to declare that we stand on our written testimony in support and are available for questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We do have seven others supporting this measure as well. And Chair failed to recognize that with regards to HB 19 on the spur bill, that there were support communications totaling six others and no opposition. Okay, and with regards to 863, there were five more supporters with regards to this measure. Let's proceed then with.
Ask a question now?
Okay, sure. Senator Agarwal, for whom? David or?
For David.
David, question from Senator Agarwal.
So the only figure I've seen for the amount of geo-bonds being requested was in the initial testimony in the House for 1.38 million. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. And that includes every island's, every project, right?
That includes nurseries throughout the islands.
Okay.
There's a number of tree nursery plus a number of district nurseries and then some specialized plant nurseries.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions from Waterland Committees? Unless, let's proceed then with HB 1276. And this is relating to state parks. Allows BLNR to adopt, amend, or repeal administrative fee schedules for certain activities relating to state parks through regular or special board meetings rather than through administrative rulemaking. And this appropriates funds out of the state parks special fund to raise the expenditure ceiling of the special fund. Let's see. Testifying for Hui Maka Ainana O Makana, Chipper Wickman. Okay, let's see. Do we have DLNR on this measure?
Yes, we do. Chair and Vice Chair, everyone, members of committee, mahalo for this opportunity. For control of ministries and division of state parks. I cannot speak highly enough of the significance of this measure. It is innovative and it will help us embrace a more adaptive management process and try to pivot on what tourism is going to look like in the future. In order to eliminate any fiscal implications, our testimony recommends that Section 3 be deleted in reference to the ceiling, because I know that the fiscal element is sensitive at this point due to regulatory issues, and it turns it more into just a policy measure. And then we've also offered a friendly amendment in regards to clarifying the user fee elements. But with that, we thank you for figuring the measure. And if you have any further questions, I'm very glad to answer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see. Kurt, that was Kurt, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Did I call, someone's there. Is that Chip? Huh?
Alan Ward, Mr.?
Okay. Anyone else available to speak on 1276? Proceed.
Alan's at the department, too.
Oh, that's, that's Alan. Oh, okay, all right. Anyone else wishes to speak to HB 1276? Hearing none. Then the Committee on Water and Land will go into decision-making and we'll go into recess. Good afternoon. The Committee on Water and Land, on its one o'clock agenda, is going into decision-making. The first item is HB 119, and this is the special purpose revenue bonds for Kauai. Chair's recommendation is that we pass this measure with an SD1, and will we effect a date to upon approval? Any discussions? Hearing none. Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Misalucha?
Aye.
Senator Revere?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Chair.
Aye.
Recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. HB 863, House Draft Two, and this is relating to forestry. Chair's recommendation is that we pass this measure. Let's see. All we'll be doing is passing, changing the effective date of 2052 upon approval. So I assume that would be an SD1 with amendments. Any discussions? Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Okay, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Misalucha?
Aye.
Senator Revere?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Last item, HB 1276, House Draft One. This is relating to state parks. And the Chair's recommendation is to take the amendments from DLNR. And this was in their testimony. And, let me put it here, okay. This is on incorporating their amendments. We'll be adding on page three, line four, quote, "the user fees, including but not limited to," unquote, and then starts again with the camping. And on the same page, line three, I have page three, line six, we'll be striking off deleting "including entrance to Diamond Head State Monument." There are technical amendments on this measure as well. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Senator Agarwal? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye with amendments.
Okay, with five members present, any reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. We'll see you at 1:45. We have a break. Thank you for those on Zoom land. Good afternoon. The Committees on Water and Land and Agriculture and the Environment is going into its decision-making. And members, this is only measures deferred to date Wednesday, March 24th, 2021. We're in room 229. And we have heard this measure previously heard on March 22nd. And just for, just to add that during this decision-making process, that the bills passed with a Senate draft one will contain technical and non-substantive amendments. Okay, members, with HB 469, House Draft One, copies have been distributed to both of the committees. And as we heard on March, I mean, on Monday's meeting, we did say if you'd give Committee on Ag as well as Waterland to give us some time to come up with a, a version that we could all live with. We've heard from the cattle guys, we've heard from DLNR, I mean, yes, DLNR as well. And so before we go into discussions, let me read out, Senator Gabbard, shall I go ahead and just read out the changes we've made?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right. So the, our recommendations on this 469, House Draft One, Senate Draft One proposed, we inserted the language to give DLNR much greater flexibility in dealing with pasture leases and industrial leases. And if you remember, on Monday, we talked about Part B, as in boy. And so with our SME help, we've kind of streamlined the language as well. We have removed the mechanism for the transfer of certain non-agriculture parklands that were identified in the House Draft. We added language that requires DLNR and DOA to meet and identify the non-agriculture parklands that should be rezoned as those in the conservation district. But let me share with you, though, that we did receive communications from DLNR. And I tend to agree with her that there are certain conservation lands that shouldn't be transferred. And I think we tend to all agree with that as well, because DLNR is the management and the manager of all conservation land, district lands. However, there are some that are zoned conservation. And I think I shared this at several meetings prior. As an example, the Big Island on the Hamakua Coast, when you leave Hilo, most of those lands were in sugar. And it's identified as agriculture. And they were homes that were, there were lots that were subdivided, developers and people bought and now are in ag district. They're actually using the lands like five acres, 10 acres, 20 acres. And I believe that probably the counties should reassess their zoning and work with DLNR to look at some of the changes that's necessary. We can do it on our end because it's, it's a county's jurisdiction on the rezoning as well, and as with DLNR. But just to let you know that, you know, there are concerns that there may be some ag districts that will be in the conservation. So that's up for discussion as, anyway. Also, we require that certain non-ag parklands under the jurisdiction of DLNR be transferred to DOA not later than December 31st, 2023. And it requires DLNR and Department of Ag to meet every five years to discuss transferring the remaining lands that's identified. It requires DOA to inquire about any easements needed by DLNR before offering a lease. It authorizes the BLNR to amend and extend existing pasture leases and to issue new pasture leases by negotiations in furtherance of public purposes for which DLNR and DOA are responsible for promoting. And amending the preamble to reflect the amendments of this measure. I'd like to add, though, that it's not in the bill, I believe, and I can be corrected by SMA if our assistant is on, that will require DLNR to report to the 2022 legislative session any lands that are in discussion with DOA for the transfer and report to the legislature thereafter from 2023 and on. And there are some technical amendments on this measure for clarity and consistency. And we'll defect this date to January 2050. Let me add that, and you can chime in, Senator Gabbard, as well, when we talk about that the Department of Ag has to inquire with DLNR on easements, when there's potential of transfer, that, you know, there are some pasture lands that allow, that the lessee allows, I guess, to occupy particular hunting seasons and things of that nature to work in forestry. But, you know, those are recognized as important discussions that DLNR needs to do with DOA, and we hope that DOA will ask as well when it comes to easements on any properties that are being transferred. So members, let's open up for discussion. Senator Gabbard?
Chair, I just wanted to say that, you know, Act 90 was passed in 2003. It's been 18 years. And I'm sure that the fact that we defected the date, I'm sure the conversation will continue in conference committee, but I think this is a good start. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, you know, we, with regards to the first point about inserting the language on Part B, giving DLNR greater flexibility. And we all know that they certainly are, DLNR is pretty much restrictive when it, when it does lease arrangements, unlike the receptions and the approval process that DOA has. And so we'd like to allow and give DLNR the same opportunities to make adjustments to lower leases when appropriate and as well as in times of hardships, that they'll be able to make adjustments to arrangements on leases on pasture lands and industrial areas as well. Any further discussion?
I just want to thank Chair.
Yes, Senator Louie Dear?
Thank you. I just want to commend you, Chair, for, you know, coming up with this variation of this annual intractable problem. One of the concerns of, one of the biggest concerns, I think, is the lease rents that the ranchers must pay. And so giving DLNR the ability to provide competitive or more competitive leasing options, I think, is a really good, good direction for this to go. It still continues to encourage the transfer of lands, but it kind of prods both parties to identify the lands that we're talking about, because that's been one of the problems, too, is it's been unclear as to which would be the appropriate lands to go and how, who is going to manage the, them if, if it was given en masse. So I think this is definitely a step in the right direction. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. And another point as well, too, is we hope that Department of Ag would not take too long a time, you know, if they disagree with some of the transfer of lands. And I understand there's some still pending. And so I think it's upon DOA to make sure that time is of the essence when it deals with farmers trying to farm their lands and provide food for all of us in Hawaii. Any further discussion on HB 469? Okay.
Chair, is there?
Senator Acasio, please.
Oh, yeah, is there, would be nice if there was specific mention that it was grazing specifically for local consumption and or, you know, locally processed as well, because I know oftentimes, you know, there's arrangements where it's shipped out. But with all respect, I just will be opposing this on the grounds of negative environmental impacts to the watershed. Mahalo.
Okay. I, did someone catch that? Are you making a comment, or can we add something to the committee report, Laura? Senator Acasio?
Thank you for asking, Chair. I'm happy to send a written comment for the report if that's, if that's okay.
That'd be great. We'll put it, we'll add it in the committee report.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, great. Any other discussion? Chair Gabbard, since there's no continual discussions, shall we go into recess to decision-making on this measure?
I'm good, yeah?
You're good? We don't need to? Okay?
No need.
All right. Okay, then, members, you've heard that Chair's recommendation. One second. What did I do with "as amended"? We did read my proposal. So Chair's recommendation then is to HB 469, House Draft One, with a SD1 as recommended and circulated. Any discussion? Okay, for the Committee on Water and Land, Vice Chair Agarwal for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Misalucha?
Aye.
Senator Revere?
Aye.
Senator Favela? Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Waterland, I mean, Agriculture, Chair Gabbard?
Same recommendation for ADN. Any discussion? Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Nishihara? Aye. Senator Acasio?
No.
Senator votes?
Aye.
Senator Favela? The measure passes. Thank you, members.
Thank you. This concludes then the joint hearing of Water and Land and the Committee on Agriculture and the Environment. Thanks, folks. Good afternoon. Both Committees on Water and Land and the Committee on Government Operations is going into its decision-making. Members, this is the 1:50 P.M. decision-making hearing of both committees, as mentioned. On today's date is Wednesday, March 24th, 2021. We are in room 229. And also to reflect our memories that this measure was previously heard on March 22nd, Monday. Just to add that during our decision-making, all bills passed, this bill passed with a Senate draft will also contain technical and non-substantive amendments. Members, and from both committees, we have circulated a Senate draft to you on HB 1149, House Draft One, Senate Draft One as proposed relating to land use. And this And this reorganizes and integrates the Land Use Commission within a modified Office of Planning, which is renamed as the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. It reclassifies the Coastal Zone Management Program and statewide sustainability branch as divisions within the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. Both Chairs, Chair, Mariwati, shall I go ahead and... Sure, go ahead. ...and reflect on the changes of SD1. With regards to the Senate Draft One, we removed languages that, first off, it established the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. It reclassified the CZM program into a division, and it reclassified the statewide sustainability branch into a division. It required Office of Planning to act as the lead agency to coordinate climate adaption and sustainability plans and studies. And it allows the Director of OP to employ staff without regard to Chapter 76. It required Office of Planning to also submit its five-year boundary review of the districts to the Governor, the Legislature, and appropriate state and county agencies. And it required the LUC to have a separate reporting structure from the Land Use Division of Office of Planning. It amended language that gave DBED sole jurisdiction over state planning, and I refer that to strictly state planning because DLNR does all the rest of the management as well. And we amended the preamble to reflect the amendments to this measure. There are technicals on this measure and will continue to retain the effective date on January 2050. Members, discussion?
Chair, you want to add?
No, I think...
Yeah, because you're okay with all your amendments?
I think, I think the proposed Senate Draft One that we have before us is, addresses the concerns that we had from the Department of Budget and Finance and from the, in terms of being able to have a firewall between the two agencies and being able to assess just the transfer from the Land Use Commission to the Office of Planning without all of the other reorganization that would be, have been major. I think those are all stricken so that we have a clean bill, I think, before us. So I appreciate the work of your office and SMA. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Chair of Waterland also thank Chair Mariwati as well as my Vice Chair Agarwal for the additional amendments that were made and recognize that, you know, these were very important amendments so that we can go into a clean measure as it moves to ways and means and judiciary, and hopefully the discussion can continue. Any further discussions, members?
Call for the question.
Okay, all right. Okay, having seen no discussions, no further, we won't go into deliberations. Chair, shall we just go ahead with the vote? Okay, members, Chairs recommend that we amend HB 1149, House Draft One, with the Senate Draft One as amended. Okay? Any discussion? Hearing none. Vice Chair for the vote for the Committee on Water and Land, Chair goes aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Misalucha?
Aye.
Senator Rivera?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Permission.
Recommendation adopted.
Thank you.
Okay. So for the Government Operations Committee, same recommendation. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair, vote a close.
The House Bill 1149, SD1, recommendation passed. Chair votes aye. Aye.
Aye.
Senator Gabbert?
Aye.
Reservation, Senator Favella? Chair, recommendation adopted.
Okay, thank you. Committee on Government Operations and Waterland, this is the end of today's visit of the Waterland Committee, and thank you, folks, for a job well done.